Okay, you're good.
Great.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
It is 2:02 and I will call the meeting to order. Eliza, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Katie Fresh.
Present.
Susan Merle.
Here.
Jonathan Dickle.
Here.
Dwayne Romero.
Here.
And Susie Zimmert.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Katie Fresh.
Here, yes.
Susan Merle.
Hi.
Jonathan Dickle.
Hi.
Dwayne Romero.
Yes.
Susan Zimmert.
Yes.
All right, so moved.
Okay. So we'll just start in, we just, I just wanted to get us all together and sort of, we have a 90-minute or so timeframe, so we're going to try to, you know, just kind of go through these fairly quickly, so we can kind of get everybody on the same page about all, you know, some of these transition topics. So our first one is our budget. And Linda's here, so I might just have her do a, and we have a, our preliminary packet that shows just some budget estimates that we had at our last meeting. But Linda, I might just have you go through just a really brief overview, like what's the bottom line as far as the budget goes? And then we'll just get some, you know, updates or thoughts from, from board members and, and superintendents.
Okay, all right. So things are moving quickly on our, on our quest here down of the rumor mill, I guess is what the right, right way of saying that. We're hearing new stuff every day. And I'm on a bunch of calls all the time trying to, to get a grasp of what I think might happen and what, what is going to happen. I did meet with Dave, had the, the fortune of hanging out with me last week for an hour or so and tried to get him up to speed at looking at some items that we have on our budget and explaining, you know, worst-case scenario of, of what we're looking at. So he's, he's drinking from a fire hose, right Dave? And getting on, getting up to speed with that, yeah. Well, we talked about some, some opportunities that we have of, of things that we may want to move a little slow and, and hiring, you know, on a, on a couple positions. Maybe look and see what's out there or move some responsibilities around. We talked a little bit about that. We've talked a little bit about stipends that are paid out in professional training and some opportunities we have there to maybe move some funding sources around and get, get, get things cleaned up, I guess would be the right way there. So just starting to really dive into the expenditures line items. But on the revenue side of things, I did hear one little piece of good news that they are not going to cut anything in categorical funding, and the numbers I gave you guys last week at the board meeting had a reduction in categorical, that's like transportation and sped and that. So I added those numbers back in as revenue line items. And then we did get an update from the Aspen Foundation, not the, the fund, the Aspen, the sales tax money. We had an update of some more, my, my numbers that I had given you guys last week were a little, I guess, my were a little more doom and gloom than their numbers by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to put that in the budget at 1.6 million monies from them, and I think I had it at one, almost, almost 1.4, but a little under 1.4. So that, that's some revenue savings there. But as I've been, I was just looking at my spreadsheet here, as I've been scrubbing through the numbers, I think I have got this down to probably about a, about a $700,000 deficit of spending, just cleaning things up and, and getting things right. And so I'm thinking, um, some of the things I'd like to look at next diving in is our cap reserve transfer that we had a million going into there. We could probably save, you know, a couple hundred thousand, if not close to 300,000, if not purchasing any buses next year. So we'll put all bus purchases on hold. I wanted to get a better feel before I cut, you put any more counts on cuts on that, on, you know, how we're doing on facility stuff, what area has planned long-term, am I missing, and I'm just going to pick, you know, am I missing that a floor was supposed to be redone, scheduled to be redone this year? I mean, or, and if we don't do that floor is, you know, what's going to happen? And, you know, is it on its last leg or not? So, but I, I think I can, I think I'm getting down to about a half a million dollars is what I've got to find. So.
That's good.
We're getting there. We're getting there. And I still have in my numbers, I'd like to be able to give, I'd like us to be able to give employees a 1.25% increase for that, you know, for the para increase in there. So I'm kind of keeping that in my back pocket too, is the last thing I got to cut. If I, I get down and I can't balance it out, then I'll, I'll take it out. But, you know, we're, we're finding opportunities to save some cash and finding some programs that maybe we need to take a better look at. And Dave can, so I can give, I'd like to be able to kind of give him a pot of money for his initiatives. And maybe, and I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm not saying this is it, but let's just pick on SWIFT. It's a training program that we have here at the school. Maybe Dave doesn't want to do SWIFT, he'd rather take that money and spend it in another direction or something. So, um, training. So the, those are the, the things we're, we're diving in. But that said, you know, I'm building all this, all these budget numbers and our state legislature is really not going to hit the ground running till next week. And it's, it's looking kind of, kind of bad, you know, of what they're saying. Their mood is really shifting money more towards unemployment and jobless claims and stuff. And I'm, I'm nervous on what their, what their solutions are going to be, especially when, when we start hearing things of, you know, the federal governance, governor or government giving us money. And then it goes to CDE and they disperse it out. They're dispersing it out according to Title I criteria. And we, I, I'll give you a little example, we get $33,000 in Title I money. And Denver Public gets 28 million.
Wow.
So when they're getting these federal funds and if they're going to disperse it out that way, we're going to get just a snippet of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Linda, when, um, I was just thinking Jonathan and I have been a little remiss in getting the, the FAB together with all this. But having said that, I think there's certainly an opportunity to make that happen in the next, next couple of weeks. And, you know, would it be helpful to you or would it be a distraction to you to have that group, you know, get reformed and take a look at the preliminary budget as you're working through all these issues?
Um, I think it would be helpful, but it would be helpful if we get Dave involved with it too.
Oh, of course.
So he can see their, their direction of, you know, what they view as important. You know what, you know what I mean? So it may not be like we get a lot of things accomplished with it, but it would be a good opportunity for us all to come on the same page. And, and no, because, you know, I've found pieces of, of money and training that, that we have and we spend. But I don't know if that's a direction we want to use next year, you know, in that. And we could probably cut some of those costs, maybe trainer, train the trainer type stuff in there. But I don't know if that, if that's the right way, right direction to go. I can just tell you the amount of money that's there, you know?
And.
I think if we were going to do that, I might suggest it'd be you, me, Dave and Linda at the beginning, at the outset, so we could, you know, we wouldn't spend a lot of time getting all the other people up to speed. Try and get those priorities that, you know, Dave and wants to bring to the table quickly integrated. And then lean on the financial advisory board for the bond issue and take the advantage of them or use their skills there. I don't know. That would just be my preliminary suggestion.
The only, the only thing I would say is I wouldn't want to wait too long because I think, you know, whomever we end up getting, re-engaged in that advisory board are fairly influential community members. So it's not just about the bond issue, it's also about just overall funding deficits and, and what we're looking at in the shortfall. And I think it will just help with the communication in the community as well. So let's get, let's take that offline Jonathan and figure out how we can maybe the four of us can meet first, talk about those individuals to make sure we, we're on the same page and then, you know, get it up and running the next, you know, two weeks or so.
Agreed.
So real quick, um, Dave, do you want to make a few comments about the budget or?
Um, sure, if I could, thank you Susan. I appreciate that. Like Linda said, actually last week was our second meeting, we've scheduled the weekly meeting moving forward. And I've been meeting with most of the directors and I'm starting to circle back with, you know, my follow-up questions as to what is this and, you know, trying to wrap around price tags and, and thinking about a educational strategy moving forward, right? And so, you know, as we all know, no one saw this coming and, and most school districts across the country weren't really prepared for it. But I think this sort of gift of time, if you will, is allowing us to think about our strategy moving forward. So as we're building the strategy moving forward, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what's going on and really evaluate what we need to really take care of in an increasingly really bad budget season, which I think will be followed up by an increasingly bad budget season. So I think it's a two-year challenge at least, and maybe three, that we have to be thinking strategically about. And so, you know, working as, as the finance team, I think it would be great to get started around that. And, and we, and Linda's, you know, paring things down is really, really appreciated. And then as we work on the price tags, what are we going to really need to, you know, open, possibly open remotely? And, and if we do open, everyone's talking about a second wave of COVID, you know, November, December, that could be worse than our current one. So as, as the education leadership team, educational leadership team, I really think we have to be thinking about this from a multi-year challenge. And what is the foundational work that we have to be engaged in? And what is the price tag to support the educators in the classroom and at the building level? So, I mean, that being said, you know, I know Linda was throwing SWIFT out there as, as an example. And I'm meeting with SWIFT, I think on Friday, to try to find out more exactly what they do and have been doing. So, you know, I do think this is the right conversation and, and, but I, I'm with Linda, the state governments are reeling from this. You know, I'm watching Pennsylvania, of course, but, you know, around us, Maryland and New Jersey and New York are all, all in a similar boat to Colorado, where revenues are down, revenues are being delayed, forgiveness is occurring and legislation's moving all over the country around, that will have a significant impact on, on revenue. So that being said, I think we really have to think about what is it that we most need and value moving forward?
And can I make a, can I ask about SWIFT, Linda? It was mandatory at one of the schools and optional at the other school. And I wasn't clear how many years it was mandatory. Are you clear about that?
I am not. I was just throwing them out as an example. I, I wish I, I was. It's, it's a program I hadn't heard of before coming to Aspen, so.
Is Tom on?
Yeah, Tom's here.
Yeah. Yeah, SWIFT was, was identified as a tool to address some performance growth and, and achievement amongst the special ed population at the Aspen Middle School. There was federal funding available at that time. We applied and were awarded about $75,000 to begin some work with an agency of our choice to begin to address how we might support the middle school. So there, there's no timeline on this, so to speak. Generally, they, you, you look at a three-year window to try to make some changes over time. What we did with SWIFT after the first year is, as we got into it and we realized that the, the issues we were seeing at the middle school really were, were born at the elementary school. So we started to have a conversation with the elementary school to align our thinking between the two buildings to support not just special ed, but ELL, minority migraine pre-reduced, and how we can enhance what we call tier-one instruction. So that happened in the second year, at which point we still had dollars left over on the federal side that paid for SWIFT, and then the district started to contribute some money. That, that takes us up to the end of this year. At which point we'll be done with the federal funding. And if we want to pursue a relationship with SWIFT, then we'd have to sign a contract with them.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I had another question about our lottery and out-of-district students and if that's going to increase our funding at all.
Yeah, any, for everybody we get in, Linda, it's between $9,000 and $10,000 that will contribute to our, our bottom line. Right now, we're looking to add about 25 people through the lottery. I did have a lengthy conversation with Rob Stein down at RE2, just to find out, you know, what kinds of pressures that may put on their system. He indicated that really created no issues from him last year. He didn't anticipate issues this year. Last week, I sent out a message about the lottery to all staff to give them a heads up. And Liza's working on the advertisement to go out right now through our newspapers. In the advertisement and in the message to the staff last week, we also had the application survey in there. And some of our staff have gone ahead and forwarded that to their friends because we're getting applications now, it's starting to fill up.
Okay, great. All right, any other updates, Tom, or?
None for me. You know, one thing, and I'll just put it in the chat line, I've been in conversation with Julie McCluskey quite a bit, she's our state representative for District 61, and she's on the Joint Budget Committee. So she's been sending this information, I've been forwarding it to Linda. But there was a great article in the Colorado Sun yesterday just about the, 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 the state of funding in the state of Colorado and the hole that we're in and why that hole may be a little more amplified in Colorado than you see in other, other states. So if it's helpful, I can certainly put that in the chat line for your viewing.
Sure.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else about budget?
Yep, I got a few questions for Linda, please.
Yeah.
Linda, Linda, for baseline estimating, I'm just trying to understand your ground position. You've mentioned that you're still trying to keep, trying to protect a 1.25% salary increase across this, the cadre, across the payroll system that we have. So is that in your baseline assumptions of numbers? Or are you using that as a variable, trying to bring it back into the, the calculation? Because based on what I see in your estimates, the 1.25 represents roughly about a $200,000 or add, if you will, to the budget. So that's my first question, where are you with that? Is that in or out?
So I currently have it in, in there, in my baseline. So what, what I did is I approached it as, let's look at our revenue on what we're going to have. And then I grabbed all payroll records, you know, payroll that we have currently onboard and then made the changes in position. So if somebody's leaving, I subtracted them and then I put the, the open position in. So it's an in and an out on any staff changes that I could see, you know, just focusing really, to be really honest, on administrators and then on teachers, big picture teacher, you know, using average salaries to take them out and to, to add somebody in.
Right.
Not a lot of headcount change there. And then I came in and I said, okay, let's, let's put the line items for each one of the departments, their budgets are not including salary, just all their stuff. So that's when I started diving in and looking at, you know, the different buckets that, that we have inside of there. What's, what's a purchase service? What are they spending on supplies? And then looking in there. And then on the next line item, I put the raise in there. So it, any, when we're building this on, at any point, you know, when, when it's all done, I think I've got it all in the right areas, I'm going to look and see what my bottom line is. And then you just will start setting priorities and, you know, taking stuff out or adding stuff in and seeing how we can net it down to zero.
Right, that's, yeah, I'm just trying to reconstruct my mind to capture from the next few moments, the, your baseline of assumptions, which reminds me, it may be, we've talked about this before, it may be most helpful for folks on the board, as well as other leaders, to see your consolidated table of assumptions that's driving the analysis. And obviously things like, I assume 1.25% of the salary, I assume kind of a neutral baseline for headcount repositioning, I assume an APEF number, you know, you mentioned, we got the communication from APEF from Elizabeth, and she mentions 1.68, which is a slightly taller number than you were estimating. That's good news. So I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, maybe just a list of those at the bottom would be helpful.
Okay. I, I did share something with Dave, I wanted to get his feedback on it. He's my, he's my guinea pig on this. So, you know, it makes perfect sense to me. And then I give it to him and then see what kind of questions and then we'll clean it up on revenue assumptions.
You are quite right and quite bright to be, you know, as a CFO, checking in with your bosses, I totally agree. But I'm just trying to understand, you know, the, the size of the bogey. You mentioned, you know, kind of give and take about a half a million dollar of a gap. But I got to understand, we got to understand what's the baseline and what's the reach? You know, what's the, the impulse there? And because it helps us make some decisions. For example, your capital, your capital reserve allocation number, I think you're absolutely correct. It is ripe, it is ripe for a bit of a trimming, a bit of a trimming, as you described, two, 300 grand perhaps, just knowing some of the other capital delays or capital expenditures we may be faced with here in the next couple of years and be able to pace those out like we did in the last recession. Obviously, we kind of, you know, to slow down on some of those larger purchases helps us through with the cash flow and the general, et cetera, et cetera. So really helpful, we can see, you know, a bit more of that scorecard after you've passed it by with Dave and, and Tom. So.
Yeah.
Excellent. Comments? Um, let's move on to our next agenda item and just so we make sure we have enough time. We are looking at the various positions that we're wanting to hire now. Tom, do you want to give an update about where we are with some of those or Molly? Uh-oh, Tom, are you on mute?
I am not on mute now. I was. I see that Molly's on, online, so I'll hand it off to her, she's been doing a great job just taking all the oodles and oodles of information and getting it into bite-sized chunks that people can understand when it comes to hiring these higher-profile positions. So take it away, Molly.
Thanks, Tom. So we have two positions that are kind of on fire right now. The first is, of course, the high school principal, and we're in kind of the formation stages of that process. Have the board members all seen the communication that went out about what that process is? I'm seeing some nods, sort of mixed bag. And the other hot potato is, of course, to hire for Director of Student Services, which has formerly been referred to as the Special Education Director. So those are similar but not identical processes where we're putting together groups of stakeholders to be on hiring or interview teams and also casting a very broad net to get input from anyone and everyone who has input to give about dispositions and leadership dispositions that are defined so that we're all using the same language. And anything else that they want to add in about what we should be looking for, for those crucial positions. I talked a little bit with David this morning about replacing the position that has previously been referred to as Director of Curriculum. We've been working on a similar process for that position and updating a job description, but we kind of hit pause on it pending a little bit more clarity and information around the budget. I think, you know, David sees and I agree with him that it is really a crucial position for curriculum development and alignment and has a big impact on kids. But we're all a little spooked out about what the money situation is going to look like. So we sort of thought we would see if we learn anything new today from this conversation to inform our, our path forward on that. But I would say we're close to launching that once we're sure that that's what we want to do as well. So we have those big three positions in the hopper. Hopefully this week we'll bring to a close our search for a Facilities Director. We have really an incredible slate of candidates. The Hiring Committee was able to narrow that down to four and only were able to narrow it down to four, which speaks to the strength of that candidate pool. So David and I have been doing a little bit more work trying to get some more information to help that hiring team make a final decision. I was checking their references. David had one-on-one conversations with them, with the four candidates. And so we'll circle back up with that hiring team on Friday afternoon to see if we can land on a finalist or maybe even a finalist and a backup candidate in the event we can't get our number one choice under contract.
So Molly, Katie and I have both expressed interest in serving on the High School Principal Committee, and I didn't know if you knew that. And I have not received any communication.
Have you expressed it via Google Form or expressed it via conversation?
In our last meeting, in our last board meeting.
Okay, that had not made its way to me yet, so I'll just make a note of that. And I'll share with you all the communication again so that you can have all of the things that I was referring to for the high school process. But Susie and Katie?
Yes. Have we missed any meetings or, I don't know, the, the status?
There's one today if you want to go.
Oh, what time?
I think.
So Theron is hosting a series of what we're calling virtual town halls to get input and to have dialogue with various stakeholder groups. So that's the meeting I think that Jonathan is referring to.
Yeah, that's what I, I just got it as an email as a parent, so.
Ah, and what time did you say it is?
Theron.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, four o'clock.
That meeting's at four. We've had, we've had a few, we've had, we had one last week for staff, we had one on Friday for students, and then yesterday for the district staff. And today will be parent group, and I think we have it opened up to everybody. And it's just going to be reviewing the process and the leadership dispositions to help inform the hiring team. So I don't think we're at hiring team yet. So you guys are in the right spot. We're just in the information gathering stages and getting the word out right now. And lots of feedback from you.
Okay.
And, and we're looking for a board member or two to jump on the, as what Molly said, we're referring to is the special ed position, but it's, we've sort of changed that job description a little bit to be a bit more inclusive, a little broader, more of a pupil services, kind of a generalist and not limited to just special education. So we'd definitely like to have a board member involved with that as well.
I think I filled out the Google Form for that one to, to be on that committee.
Where are you finding, where are we supposed to be finding all these Google Forms?
In the emails that you got? In the emails that you got. I mean, it's among many emails, but yeah, they're in emails, I think Tom sent to us last week. There was one for High School Principal and one for Special Ed Director, yeah.
Yeah, we we, Suzie, we sent it out ASD. We also sent it out, I think specifically Tom sent it out ASD. I know Danielle sent it out ASD. I know Liza sent it out ASD. So just, we'll make sure that you're getting that though. Because I mean, because I know you guys said that you want to be on there.
Do we need to fill out those forms as board members or are we on the committee?
You have a lot of gravitas in this decision.
I'm gonna skip the form then, thank you.
Are we, have we made a decision whether, and Dave and Tom or Molly, whether we're going to continue having these two new directors as part of the executive, as the district team? Or if, or has that decision not been made yet? No.
So we actually haven't nailed it down. And so what I'm thinking about candidly, and this is a great place for that conversation, is sort of expanding, I think it's expanding, sort of the the district instructional leadership team to include principals and these director positions, right? And one of the beautiful things about working remotely is that we can come together. You know, I'm running my cabinet meetings remotely here, and I just recently did that because, you know, there's going to be a leadership gap in Centennial, July 1. So we're developing the cabinet, the district office positions. We're working hand in glove with the building principals, and they're sitting in on our cabinet meetings now and helping generate agendas and problem solving and that sort of thing. So as I'm thinking about Aspen School District, I'm thinking about putting the principals at the table with the instructional, district instructional leadership team, you know, and Molly and Linda, because we're all sort of interconnected and we're of a size that I think that's, I mean, it wouldn't work in Denver Public Schools, but it it should work here because the decisions we're making will have a actual impact in the schools and hopefully faster as a result of that. So that's how I'm thinking about it.
To ask Suzie's question in a different way, are those positions at the district offices definitely going to be director level positions necessarily? Or is there a possibility that it would be a lower, you know, lower level, lower compensated level employee that could do a lot of the similar work? Not maybe all of it, but some of it? Has that been part of the discussion or not really?
Um, we haven't really discussed it a whole lot except for the fact that we are tabling for now the one director position as we're working through the budget process, right? I mean, I I think it's an important position, but I also think if if we, if if, look, if it goes away and if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. And we'll figure it out, right? And Theron's, you know, got extensive secondary experience. I've got extensive K-12 experience, certified elementary. You know, I haven't done that work per se for a few years because of all the people around me. But, you know, one of the things we had talked about in the interview process was, you know, rolling up the sleeves and getting back into that work. And just means if I'm focused there, I can't be focused over here, which is why, you know, as we were talking about with Molly, I'm really excited about the the four candidates. They're all strong candidates for facilities. I don't want to have to oversee facilities to the level that I do now. So if that person, the new person, can take it and run, we can focus more on the academic side of things. So we could consider it. I've thought about both of those positions as possible teachers on special assignment or a possible supervisor position instead of director. So we could ratchet it down a tier. It's just really hard to get into those conversations because we're so booked on time. But have thought about that. We just haven't talked about it as like the senior leadership. And and Tom's been a huge help in this conversation with Molly and Theron, but we just haven't had that much time to really have that conversation.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Tom may be able to speak to this in a little bit more detail and with a little bit more technical expertise. But my understanding is that we do have some legal requirement to have a special education director because we are our own administrative unit for special education services.
Yeah, I can certainly address that a little bit. And I know Dave has no small amount of experience in special ed as well, so he can jump in. But several years ago, we moved from being a part of what was called an administrative unit that was shared by a number of districts. It was called the Bosse's, the Mountain Bosse's, was 10 different districts across the mountain region. We identified several years ago that we could do a better job of attracting and retaining staff to provide services like speech therapy, psychology, some counseling, special ed, things of that nature, if if we formed our own administrative unit. So so we did do that and we were successful in being awarded that that level of accreditation. And with that comes it's a mandatory 0.5 FTE of special ed director that we're required to have available in-house. There is some flow-through money if you're on the Fed side that we get. There's also been what we call a low incidence, high need reimbursement dollars as well that Heather has applied for where we've we've won as much as $400,000 in a couple of different years to offset the the cost of special ed. So there's been some advantages on our side to be an AU, and we have been primarily successful in our our fundamental goal, which is to attract and retain really good quality special ed staff. So we have been able to do that. The retaining piece is the is is the real challenge.
Was all that money a result of grants that we had to apply to the state for?
Yes, yeah, those were additional dollars the state has made available for the cost of educating kids that is exceptionally high.
So has that been a net, by moving away from Mountain Bosse's, has that been a net cost or a net revenue generator from?
It's been, it's been pretty flat. There's been years where maybe we made a little more money because of the high cost reimbursement.
Including the salary of that level person or not including that, including that?
Yeah.
Tom, also, do we also have a special ed coordinator? And are we hiring for that position as well?
No, we we had a special ed coordinator and that was simply transferred down into the elementary school to be a a provider of Read Act services and elementary related support. Lori Anderson was her name. She had been previously at the elementary school. It's, it was not a director related position. It was simply a teacher on special assignment type role to teacher contract. So she rolled up here this year to do some support on special ed. But the the greatest need in special ed moving forward is going to be at the elementary level with the additions to the Read Act. So that got rolled back down into the elementary school.
Okay. Any other hiring comments or questions?
I am on the East Hiring Committee, and I just want to make sure, Molly, we are getting together Friday, you said, for our final decisions or at least final recommendations up to up to Dave and Tom? And Darren.
That's right. You should have a calendar invite, a link to the Google Hangout and also an email with the link to all of the information on the four finalists.
Thank you. Yeah, I got that as well, and it was it was really well organized. We can go through their their application materials one last time. Thank you. Good. Okay.
And if I can, and just circling back to Katie's earlier comment, the positions that we've gone out for are not executive director positions. We're moving some of that work back under the Assistant Superintendent and maybe even under me. So I do think that the price point even for a director, Katie, will be a bit less than this, the current fiscal year. So I do think we'll capture some savings there moving forward. And and again, working with Linda, you know, a weekly check-in, you know, we're keeping a really, really close eye on this. I mean, I do think it's an important position. It's an ideal position, but it might not be a director level position. And if it is, it will probably be less than we paid this year.
Great. Good.
Any other comments on that agenda item? Let's move to facilities and bond. We just had our, at our last meeting, a proposal from the Cunningham Sanchez Group and to move forward as though we are doing our bond ask in the fall. And they've kind of rearranged that proposal so that at any point we can decide maybe that's not such a good idea. But as of our last meeting and, you know, as we go forward, it it seems like it can't hurt to ask a little bit. And maybe that this is a time when if we say we won't be raising taxes, that will be appealing to to our taxpayers. And it could be a really great long-term piece financially for our district as far as as facilities and maintenance and whatnot. Anyone have questions or comments about our bond proposal?
Susan, this is Linda. Could we talk a little bit on the dollar amount of the bonds that we were looking at going forward with? I did receive a question in regards to that on the exact dollar amount that we were looking at. Is it, because I think the paper quoted 30 million, but I thought originally it was more.
Yeah, and and I don't know that we've come to a dollar amount. I mean, the the last projection had, if we used all of the the funds from, you know, what we would be rolling into a new bond based on on our our retiring bonds. I I don't remember off the top of my head. Dwayne, do you remember the number?
Yeah, it was somewhere from 80 and 90 million would be the total size of the bond proceed scaled off of, you're right, scaled off the mill levy that we have available to us that would be retiring from existing debt. Now, that, you're absolutely right. We haven't decided in Rick Carroll. I don't know where he came up with this number to report, you know, last week's article, but.
I don't know. I've never said 30 million.
No, in fact, I think we had said up to 90 million in board meetings multiple times.
Correct. So that being said, yeah, we're, what we have in front of us from Cunningham Group, right, is just an update to what we'd asked for from our last board meeting. Give it to us in phases, give us the ability to go no-go, you know, kind of kill switch it at each end of each phase, obviously, as we advance through the early summer with updated information as to whether or not we are wise to go into the fall and ask for the the bond float. And we all know also that we have bond counsel or consultant, bond consultant, that really we're not paying, that they'll get their compensation if and when we float the bonds. And then finally, we're going to have a little bit of probably some Dick bump, Richard bump legal work helping us to underwrite the the bond issuance. So there'll be some additional expense from him. But on a, you know, big picture, this is relatively small numbers. If we float that large of a bond and we spend less than, say, $65,000 or so, I think we're going to be pretty well positioned in the eyes of the community in terms of being frugal for the cost of issuance.
And that the cost of issuance all gets, as we talked about last time, gets rolled into the bond issuance itself, so it's not out of the operational budget.
Yeah, we can, we can. Yeah.
Until the Cunningham Group does their work, we're in no way able to even say, are we going to be 60, 70, 80, 90? Because we don't know.
That's what their work is, basically, is figuring out.
That, and then also, you know, from the housing side, I can't recall if they're actually, they're not really doing anything on the housing question, right?
Correct.
So, you know, that's a separate with everything, you know, that's all the various conversations that have gone on in the community and other projects that are going on that we could potentially participate in. That's another decision point, and I don't know whether we need a subgroup to determine that dollar value or since we don't really have professionals that, you know, within the purview of all the people we've hired to do this allocated to that. And Dwayne, you've probably done the most work on that. What are your thoughts?
If we allocated $500,000 to $600,000 per unit, per key, to get, you know, kind of a real, I know that sounds ridiculously tall and chunky and fat, but it's right. And it implies or implicitly includes some benevolent contribution of land into the equation. Perhaps not a complete gift, but some below market treatment whereby we could get something across the street. Or that's that's key in that number. So $500,000 to $600,000 a key is relatively skinny. And so, you know, you're looking at, if we were to say $30 million of the bond capacity, that would be 60 keys. That'd be pretty good play. That'd be a pretty good play in a damn good community across the street if we're so fortunate to land that parcel, so.
So I guess the question, though, is who, what group? Is it the facilities planning group that is trying to determine the recommendation to the board on how many keys we should be going for as part of the bond process?
We have a bit of a, Tom and a few members from the AEF Ward have been participating together with Molly to survey and then determine roughly, or if you will, more more exact than just a wet thumb in the in the air, trying to understand what would be the need of the district in the longer run. And so.
And types of housing and how many and and that's.
Yeah, yeah. So first things first, yeah, go ahead, Tom. Let me just jump in real quickly to answer your first question, Katie. In the timeline that I built for the board around this whole process, I had suggested it might be in your advantage to piggyback your FAB concept with sort of a bond council overview or oversight committee who can begin to roll in the recommendations from the housing group, which is primarily members of AEF. It's, I think it's Brad Schlosser, it's Craig Rogers, it's Bowden, Bob Bowden. Yeah, Dwayne's doing some work in there as well, are making the primary recommendations on the housing. We got Cunningham and Sanchez making recommendations on our infrastructure and our and our district build out. So as those things all come together, they can feed through your FAB and you can take that brain trust and work with them to make some determinations about what this board is is willing to to go to as far as a a total bond number.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks, Tom. So Jonathan, that kind of ups the urgency of not just budget, but also getting that those folks on board and knowing who is in on that other committee is helpful too. So we don't include them on this too.
Agreed. And Tom, I'd like to pitch in there on the housing thing just to be able to also allocate or advocate for, you know, making sure we get a substantial amount.
Okay, I'll send a message and careful what you ask for.
And Dwayne, it sounds like, you know, what, how are the bond consultants paid, a percentage? How how are they paid?
Yeah, it's it's some amount of basis points off of the the size of the float. So they are obviously motivated for optimal sizing, but but, you know, we're not going to let that be the the engine that drives this thing. And it's all success driven.
Yeah, think of it as a commission on the float itself, so it doesn't actually flow through us at all.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be compensated through the issuance, right? Not out of our net proceed to Katie's point.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Dave, do you have thoughts about our bond issue?
Just a few and realizing that I'm really the newest of new into the conversation. Just in my research and as I'm meeting people, I think that the housing piece is a really, really important part of it. And then, you know, in, in my conversations with Gary, there are some not insignificant sort of, I, I would call it like pipes and paint projects. It's very like unattractive. And you, you can't, it's like fixing a roof, you know, everybody hates to do it, but you have to. And so it sounds as if there's some projects like that that, that need attention sooner rather than later. So I, I do think that there is some importance to it. And that housing piece seems to be one of the largest challenges for us to attract the kind of talent that we want to come and to stay. So I, I really think it's important. You know, I would, I would encourage the board to think about taking it to the street through bond council and, and getting permission in November. I, I think it's really important and I don't think there's going to, for the next three years, I don't think there's going to be a better time to ask than this fall. So as I think about all of it in the landscape, I do think that this piece is huge and important to the success of the district moving forward, both constructionally and from a personnel perspective.
Any other thoughts on our, our bond or facilities conversation? Let's go on to strategic plan.
You just sent us the just on that so we can have it present in our mind. Sorry, Susan, for the interruption. You should be forward.
No, that's okay. What did you ask for?
An updated timeline, just so we can make sure we have our ideas on the, I know you had sent us one a while back. I think it's probably in the board doc somewhere. I could go search for it. But if you could just email it to us, make it a little easier and quicker.
From Tom, the timeline?
Yeah, the timeline to make sure we're getting those timelines and that we can also look at it with Katie to make sure that we understand when we need to get the financial advisory board slash bond board moving.
I would also say we also need to have just a, a conversation about when we would want to ask for renewal of the Aspen sales tax and the Snowmass Village tax. We had thought about doing that all at once with this bond in the fall. It's not actually expiring until the following year. So we could wait a year, but that might be worse. I don't know. But that, that's just a conversation we should think about. In addition. So I'm going to put that on as a, you know, agenda item. When we talk about our bond, we probably should discuss that as well.
Did we receive our Snowmass Village money?
Uh, real close. Which we've been real close, but we're, we're getting even closer.
Great. Carry on.
We got.
Who did we invite in last time when we discussed the sales tax? You know, who, who, who needs to be advi- an advisor and or consulted on that kind of a timing decision?
Well, we need to talk to town council. I mean, city council and Snowmass Town Council. Yeah.
But I thought there are different times, timeframes.
They're on the same timeline.
Oh, so Snowmass was shorter the first time around. Okay.
No, five years.
They didn't happen at the same time though.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah.
Different election though, right? They wasn't both in November. Was it?
They were both in November, but the sales tax in Aspen was first. And we had that for five years. Then we renewed that with this town of Snowmass Village tax. Yeah.
I'm missing a renewal period. I knew they didn't come in at the same time originally.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is from a strategic perspective, you know, let's make sure that we're talking to all the right people about timing input, given everything that's going on.
Yes.
And have, I, I'd love to hear from them when we first talk about this.
Well, so I, I think two groups that we need to talk to about that are the Snowmass Village Public Education Fund and the APEF, the Aspen. Cause those are basically our, our cheerleaders. So that's why they're, they're on the ballot and they're, that's why they're on that board is to basically help us, you know, tout our, our funds that they provide us. So.
Do we know how much APEF, because Elizabeth Parker in her email suggested that APEF has retained some of the sales tax. Do we know what the current balance of that account is and what it's being retained for?
It sounded like $100,000 and they retained it for, I think there's a timing collection and, and then when they give it to us, there's a timing difference between that. And so part of that was, was also to fill in gaps if we, if they ran into a sales tax shortage, which.
That's where the question comes in because the way I read the email is they've been retaining $100,000 per year, which would mean there's a balance left over. At least that's the way I read her email. So.
I don't know exactly about that. I should say.
Linda, are you close to this now? Do you understand what APEF's operating?
Yeah, I, I think what they're retaining it for is they, they, Susan was right that they, you know, to kind of smooth out any small fluctuations that we may have, but they really tried to, to pay as much as they could out and safely this last year.
So in other words, your instinct is roughly the same. That is, it's probably not that large. It's not an accumulated balance of hundreds and hundreds of thousands. It's probably is a hundred K or so.
Yeah.
One, they didn't want to run it all the way down. And then they had administrative costs within their separate tax returns and all that kind of good stuff. They wanted to hold a little bit back. She, she actually says our policy is to maintain a reserve of 50 to 100. So as little as 50.
Yeah, 50, less than 100.
All right. It wasn't clear to me to maintain a reserve per year, per funding year or per altogether.
I think it's per altogether.
Altogether, yeah. I'm not a hundred percent confident, but I'm like 98% confident that's their intention there. And some, I think while they were talking, when we were having the cash flow issues this year that for the zero interest loan, we talked about maybe the timing of their payments coming to us a little more when we're lower on cash. So that, that was some on their payment schedule for us. And, and my view was give us the money as soon as you have it. You know what I mean? That, that helps.
We'll manage the cash flow. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to strategic plan and, and maybe a summer retreat planning. Dave, do you have thoughts about this? About what we should do as far as, you know, strategic plan in the, in the near future and then in the more distant future? I think.
Still muted, Dave.
There we go. No, for some reason.
Dave, you may have to jump off and jump back on. That's kind of been the, the MO around the Google. It's real quick. Just that's what I do. Or push start. How about now? Yeah, yeah. Headphones were dying, clicking in and out, all kinds of interesting things. Anyway. So yeah, I do think that we should think about, you know, leadership retreat around the strategic plan. I think we should, you know, kind of, and this will be some of the work that Darren and I will be working on in July and August is mapping out what it means educationally. I do think thinking about, you know, five-year education plan kind of is an integral part of it is, is vital to it. And what that means from a board perspective. So I definitely think we need to wade into that in sort of late July, early August as we're planning for next year. And, and planning, you know, does the fact that we're going to be educating in the age of COVID mean we're going to have to rethink the first year or two of the strategic plan, right? Well, I do think this is a seismic event and, you know, and I just actually haven't had time to wrap around, you know, the Aspen strap plan with that lens. So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
My recommendation would be to, you know, really think about it. Think if we need to adjust it and, and get those players back around either a virtual table or a table. You know, late summer, very early fall, and then move it forward that way. We'll just kind of map it out as we're going.
Yep.
We, we also have yet to do the visioning exercise portion of it that we had talked about trying to bring back that consultant for who didn't have the time to do it for us. You know, so I think we, if we're going to, we don't really have a fully baked plan because we're missing the vision portion, which is very critical. So the question is, you know, do we try to attempt that with Dave early on in that July timeframe? Do we try to accomplish something beforehand? On that, before we get into the details of the plan, I'm thinking more of the high level stuff too.
Vision sounds good to me.
I think it's important for the board and Dave to have a retreat in the summer where we, and, and I mean, we need a vision, obviously for, you know, and set our priorities at that point. And so I think that sounds like kind of a good topic for that retreat, probably.
Well, but just in the context of the past conversations we've had about this, and perhaps all the COVID stuff has changed it. There was a feeling, and I don't personally feel this way, but some other board members, I think, felt that we needed to attempt to address the vision earlier in if we were planning on going forward with the bond issue. And having that articulated clearly so that we'd be able to articulate to the community what the plan is. Now, having said that, I feel that it's going to be pretty clear that the vast majority of the bond issue is going to be housing and maintenance for just practically. So I'm not sure whether that has to be finished, but there was certainly a feeling before that we needed to do that sooner rather than later. So just wondering what people think.
Yeah. And I think we'll, we will come across some of that when we get the Cunningham Groups sort of in my report, I guess, when we have to decide, all right, what are our values about this? Like, what is it that we find important in, in the strategic planning piece that we did before? And so I think we'll have to do that to a certain extent to sort of narrow it down about what are we going to actually ask the voters for? So I think that could be all kind of a, a good exercise to go through. And that their timeframe is in the summer as well. So that we can kind of, you know, get to something that we go to the voters with that's pervasive and actually has a message and a purpose. Anybody have thoughts about that?
Dwayne, you're shaking your head. Yes.
I'm in agreement.
You want to wait on the vision?
Uh, yeah. And I, I mean, right now it just, it feels like we're just kind of standing still on that one. I, I, my head is focused on getting, like you said, getting our, our story prepared and getting more definition around the scope of work that we wish to underwrite on that bond piece. The others, you know, the strategic visioning and all that. I just feel that we're, we're just kind of on pause at the moment and it's, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. I think we just need more time to have things settle out a little bit further and be kind of patient with ourselves, but, but not patient frankly, with the definition, the detailing of the bond scope. I think we got to giddy up on that piece for sure.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm not sure they're mutually exclusive. I mean, I, I think most of the country is, is in kind of a hold and see, because we're still figuring out COVID. Right, Suzy? I mean, we haven't even fully figured out this virus. We don't know what schooling is going to look like in the age of COVID, COVID-19. And, you know, with social distancing, you know, all of schooling is built around sort of this congregating concept. And if we're not going to be allowed to congregate, that's going to have an impact for the bond. Right? It, it, it will change how, you know, we've talked about hand sanitization and, you know, masks and things like that. But if, you know, we get to a point where we're like splitting the, the school day in half and we're educating half the class in the morning and the other half in the afternoon and, you know, it's, or a hybrid model, there's techno- technological ramifications that we're going to have to look at. You know, and we're going to have to ramp up our sort of online learning presence, which is, is not preferred and is really hard to do and do well. So, you know, I think a hold is important as we're gathering more information. But I do think, you know, really thinking about the infrastructure issues, the housing issues, those are hard and those are real and those transcend what we're doing educationally. So I think to Dwayne, you can move forward or, or giddy up, as you say, I'm practicing my Western language. You know, so we'll, we'll giddy up there. We'll hunker down a little bit and roll out the bedroll as we're thinking about the strap plan. Because I do think that has some real educational implications and how we approach the work for just, you know, just next year alone could wind up similar, but more robust than what we're doing now. And there's going to be some financial impact, which will be challenges for Linda and the core team.
I mean, perhaps it isn't even visioning then, perhaps it's just alternative education strategies in the age of COVID over the next 12 to 24 months is what we're talking about in an offsite.
Yeah. And Katie, to that point, I've been reaching out to some people to, and, and thinking about how we can provide support to our teachers in this online ecology. And I, I really think, you know, we've, we've got to be thinking about that. I, I'm going to be surprised if we can open in September, in August as usual. I'm going to be very, very pleasantly surprised and I hope I'm wrong. But I, I, I have not seen anything to suggest that I am. Unfortunately.
Yeah. Which is a great segue into our last agenda item, which is.
On that, Susan, I would just say that we would, we do need to align ourselves around the, whatever the facilities priorities are. You know, kind of independent of the vision, that seems to be a key one that we probably need to get on the same page as soon as possible.
Well, and I think that's part of the work with Cunningham Group for sure, because they, they kind of will boil down what we've gathered, information we've gathered and they'll put some prices on it. And we can say, okay, these are, these seem reasonable and, and are part of our vision and these maybe we'll have to wait on or whatnot.
Yeah. I think it'll be easy until we get to the trade-offs of, okay, well, moving the bus bar costs whatever millions of dollars and that's an additional 20 housing units. And so what are we going to do?
Yeah. We'll, we'll have to have that conversation. It's a good one to have. I mean, it's important for sure.
It's hard, it's hard to do until you set that vision of who you want to be. So it is a little bit of a catch 22. So. But having said that, I'm not sure that every single point needs to be delineated prior to going to the voters. Right? Dwayne was just about to make that point. I see him getting his hand up.
There are some, there are some, kind of some constants in this, you know, this equation, this multiple variable equation. The, the one constant, as it was said earlier, is the housing piece. We know to attract and retain quality staff, we've got to lean in a lot harder on, you know, increasing our inventory of district-owned housing. And so regardless of what our strategy and our long-term vision is, we know that that's, that is, you know, it's a, it's a big priority and it's going to be a constant. So I'm comfortable with that. And I just, I wish we had the land of their control.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, small detail.
Fix that, Dwayne, will you?
Some land.
And is there anything, Dwayne, talking about that, is there anything we need to be doing that we're not, that you know of to help move that forward?
Well, your pitching in on the housing group is a good move in that, in that direction because the housing group has those relationships with landowners and can further advance those conversations. Obviously COVID.
and can further advance those conversations. Obviously, COVID kind of kicked us all in the rear end. So we got to try to respark that stuff. Bowden and, you know, Craig Rogers and a couple of other folks are on that subcommittee along with Tom Heel. So, yeah, I think I'm doing the right thing. Roger.
Okay, so I just want to keep us on track. So let's, let's move on to COVID, um, just in general. And some of the things that I think we should discuss a little bit are, you know, what we might, what it might look like in the fall, what it, what we can do to support our teachers, what we can ask AEF to help us with as far as costs associated with that. You know, you name it, but I think that's, those are things that we need to be considering. Dave, do you have some thoughts on that?
Well, sure, and, you know, Tom, uh, has, has already started the conversation. You know, and he folded me in on a conversation with Cynthia Chase last week and Cynthia and I misfired today, but we have a conversation for next week scheduled around this, among other things. But thinking about, you know, how we're going to do education, it's going to rely a lot on, you know, guidance from the county officials and the state officials. Uh, is to, you know, opening what we can do, when we can do it, how many people can gather? I mean, um, and that's, that's the real challenge for conventional schooling as we know it. There's nothing in the current data sets that are suggesting schooling is, is going to be happening anytime soon. Um, so, you know, we were talking about, you know, the extended school year for our special needs kids and trying to do some of that remotely. You know, uh, we're doing a lot of telephonic therapy, if you will. And so I think we need to really explore that for some of our, uh, most at risk students, uh, just to, you know, and that, you know, Heather, I hope we'll be working on that over the next month. And then whoever we get in will be able to help pick up with that and move that forward. So that's, that's the short, short term. Then the next turn, the next hurdle is, is opening in August. And what, what will that look like? And again, I'm really worried about, you know, schools are designed to put people together by design. And that's going to be a real challenge if we're really trying to keep people apart. So we can do a lot of hand washing stations, which aren't hugely expensive. We can do a lot of masks, but it's hard to ask a five and six year old to wear a mask all day. I'm seeing that as problematic. Um, you know, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, certainly the secondary levels, more of a seminar approach where, you know, a lot of content is delivered remotely, but then they come in and work with their teachers in small groups or maybe in neighborhoods in smaller groups. But again, with the social distancing, not quite sure how that's all going to play out. So that's, that's a huge question mark as we're running up to next, next school year, twenty twenty-one.
And Tom, also, if you might want to comment as well, but I've gotten some feedback that it just, for our teachers right now, it feels, I think, rather daunting for the next, um, month to, to be, to keep our kids engaged and keep everybody kind of moving in the right direction in this online environment. I think it's, it's a big challenge for them. And so just ways that we can support them and, and support our students. Do you have some thoughts about that?
Yeah, we're, we're starting to collect some data that reinforces that thought. Uh, we've done the working condition survey and we've got about a hundred staff that have chimed in so far. And now I've got the, um, the parent survey about their perception of our asynchronous model. I have about five hundred responses from that. And, and what we're seeing is, uh, if you look at all of those responses together, the fundamental, fundamental component in all of this, the glue that holds it all together is the teacher. And, uh, what we're recognizing, you know, what we're hearing is that having robust opportunities to maintain that relationship between the teacher and the student is critical. That we're losing that as, as the honeymoon sort of fades from, uh, from, from newness to, uh, to less new right now. And, uh, the technology and the gizmos are no longer exciting. Uh, we're also seeing that as staff self-report, particularly the teaching staff self-report, how many hours they're working. Uh, they're working a lot. They are self-reporting, sixty-six percent of them are reporting between thirty and fifty hours a week, uh, that they're doing. Uh, we also have, uh, uh, just under fifty percent of our staff are raising their own children while they're trying to provide this, this service, uh, which creates a unique dilemma. And as Picken County begins to phase back in, uh, as construction permits particularly are being approved at the county level and, uh, those guys and gals are going back to the job sites. Uh, they happen to be the spouses of, uh, of some of our teachers, of many of our teachers. So we're seeing that additional crunch on our staff as well to provide services. Again, as we look at the parent side of the response, uh, the trend of satisfaction around engagement is going up. However, the trend around access and feeling like students are enjoying this is going down. And again, when you look at the qualitative responses within there, there, there's this fine line between being able to deliver content in an engaging way, being present to deliver that content, so it's synchronous. Uh, at the same time, recognizing that we have a lot more families that are going to be in far more flexible, uh, family dynamics going forward. So the asynchronous model is becoming, is going to become critical. And at the same time, we want to develop the connective piece between teachers and their students. That's what teachers refer to when we ask them about working conditions, is that that's what they miss. That's what drives them is the relationships and we're missing that. So it's definitely, uh, difficult and hard right now for the staff, uh, to try to imagine themselves doing this into the fall. And we're, we're going to have to, to do some really thoughtful work, not just in instruction, but in, but in governance and in wellness and in post-secondary and in facilities and operations and technology uh, to put some, uh, some models together that can support our staff moving forward. Uh, it's going to take a bit of work this summer.
Anecdotally, anecdotally, I've heard, and, and I'm curious, Tom and Dwayne and Katie, you all have kids and, uh, in the system. And, and Jonathan, um, I've heard that boys are not, um, taking to online learning as much as girls. Do you have any data to, one way or the other, about boys versus girls?
I don't have any data to that effect. Tom?
Oh, yeah. So some of the data points that are starting to emerge over here anyway, is that youngsters that struggled in the traditional school setting are actually, some of them are actually enjoying the asynchronous learning aspects and, and the ability to work independently and not in a group. And the flip side of that coin that we're starting to see and hear about is that kids who are really good in traditional school settings are struggling a fair bit in this. Is your data supporting any of that notion, Tom?
Yeah, absolutely, David. We're seeing that, that, you know, we, there was already a gap uh, in, in services, uh, in this community begin with. And, uh, how some family had access, uh, to, to services at a greater extent than other families. That gap is only growing bigger, uh, is one of the things we're seeing. And, and we're seeing some of the same, same exact stuff you're seeing about who gets engaged and who doesn't get engaged. But, uh, generally speaking, those families that we've identified that, that had some sort of trauma or had difficulty in meeting the social determinants of health, those have only been amplified since this has begun.
Well, so, Tom, it sounds to me like some of those datas are arguing, arguing for more synchronous learning to happen than to be entirely on this asynchronous platform that was contemplated in the beginning.
It is split right down the middle, uh, which is not uncommon in this community to have polarized points of view.
No, but the disengagement that you were speaking to specifically, talking about interaction between students and teachers suggests asynchronous model where they're actually interacting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. On the flip side of that, because of the flexibility that's going to require with more and more families uh, going back to work and the difficulties in trying to access this information uh, in the concept or the confines of your own family dynamics, is that there's going to require greater flexibility. So, uh, suggestions coming out in the suggestion box or in the qualitative, uh, side of the survey or things like, you know, why can't we just, uh, have all the kids, uh, meet in Google Hangout at ten o'clock at night? They're already out there doing that. And we'll get the teachers to do that, uh, with them. And so it's requiring some flexible thinking, uh, on both sides of that.
Please don't do that. Just because they're up and playing video games doesn't mean it's a good time to do, you know, calculus.
I think to Tom's point, though, I think he's headed exactly in the right direction. It is this blended model. I mean, we rolled out asynchronous originally. And the disconnect for both students and teachers is really hard. So we went to something of an office hours model. I don't, we, we certainly didn't roll out a ten o'clock, uh, ten, ten PM office hour. Um, because many of our faculty are done by then. But, you know, we have said like two and three times a week when teachers are trying to meet with students. And if the kids can make it, great. And if they can't, such is life. That's that flexibility that I think that this new ecology is demanding. So.
You know, I also think that we shouldn't dismiss the fact that, and this is well documented in lots of articles around the country, the fact that some kids are actually doing better, even if it's not necessarily asynchronous or synchronous, but they're doing better in this kind of an environment. Speaks to me that we're losing kids in a regular school environment that we shouldn't be losing. And then we need to, as we're moving forward with the strategic planning, we need to consider that. That the traditional school factory model, you know, might not be appropriate for everybody and might be something that we need to modify once we get back in a normal, a normal scenario. So I, I, I think that's a really important point that we have to make sure we don't lose as we go back to what we consider quote unquote, normal. Doesn't have to be the same as it was before.
And, and Katie, that's a great point. One of the things that boiled up in all of the strategic work was the concept of equity and, and how to, uh, support this idea of student, student learner readiness. Those who weren't moving, uh, at the rate of their peers. Uh, so, uh, it's a great point and is, uh, there's much work still to be done.
Yeah. My point wasn't exactly one of equity, though, because I still don't understand what that word means, but, um, so, but, you know, but the fact that models could be different and there could be some aspects that of this online learning. I've certainly seen it with my kids and heard it, heard of it with other kids. There are some aspects that are actually better. And, you know, we need to, overall, not the model, I agree with that, but there are some aspects that are potentially better and maybe not for everyone, but certainly for some students. And we need to make sure we include that in the, um, plan going forward.
Well, and, and I think, if I may, that there'll be a new normal on the backside of this. And, and, you know, to Aspen's credit, this, these, these surveys will be really important as we're, you know, doing the table talk or the after action reviews. And we're taking a look at this and the lessons learned from, you know, trying to grapple with, you know, massive send everybody home, work from home, to now we have to refine the learning. I think there will be a hybrid aspect to this and, and I think shame on us if we don't really explore that um, and create those opportunities. And, and that was part of what I was talking about from an infrastructure, uh, point earlier from the, for the bond reference. I mean, we might need to be thinking about some sort of technological pieces to support. Right? We can change, you know, a high school calendar or, or schedule so that kids could do some of their work remotely with, you know, professors in Australia, right? Or instructors in Australia, you know. Right? So I think that that, but that would very much become the customization of the individual student's learning pathway. And, you know, Theron's been doing some work around the pathways and that kind of thing. That's exciting.
I think, I think when you look at, um, some of the lessons learned, and we try to do a, a best practice every Monday with the staff. First of all, if I would have asked my staff to do a briefing once a week, uh, before COVID, that would have been almost impossible and met with a lot of resistance, you know. That's about what happened now. Everybody wants to do it. Everybody's on time. Everybody's focused. Everybody has that, uh, uh, sort of strategic admissions sort of centric viewpoint in doing that. They're willing to meet together in their departments daily, uh, to review content and how well it's being delivered. They're looking at what's essential for each lesson, which is what we've always asked them to do. But, I mean, this is really, really taken away all the veneer off of that conversation. And they've had to get to the real analysis of what's essential in, in, in lessons. And I think that kind of focus is going to serve us well later on. Um, Diane Godfrey pointed out to me, she goes, Theron, I remember asking you to do, um, a Google Hangout meeting and you just looked at me and look, I don't have time to deal with that. Guess what? I'm an expert on Google Hangout. I think, uh, you'll have, uh, that kind of, uh, work that's going to be, uh, embedded through, through everybody. There was a lot of assumptions we had about people that were wrong. I'll give you an example. I had a parent breakfast and, you know, the Nerdewells of Aspen, I only get eight to twelve parents every, every week unless it was a hot, hot topic. Now I'm getting sixty-one parents, uh, average, uh, going to that just by doing the virtual format. So clearly, um, there's some things that we can do to improve and, and, and meeting people where they are and what they're doing. So I think, uh, to today's point and, and to Tom's data, we're looking at lots of after table talks that, that I think, uh, will be pivotal in how we move forward with this. I think, um, also, if you look at the synchronous model, it's starting to blend into what we're doing at the high school every week. We're going to try to ramp that up and try to figure out how that's going to be built in a meaningful way. And tomorrow we have our, our, our first parent meeting for IB. Brace for that because I'm excited to hear some of the feedback about, uh, what comes out of that meeting. But just know, uh, there's, uh, there, there's going to be tons that are learned from here. I know Tom, today, when we were meeting with our executive team, I think everybody had a million things to, to share. And, uh, only one person gets the floor. So that's another good thing about this meeting. So with that, I'm going to be quiet and let, let the meeting proceed.
I, I just had a final comment about, about synchronous versus asynchronous. There's some data that, uh, kids, certain subgroups of kids learn faster and better with Khan Academy, but, but other groups do not learn well with Khan Academy. So I think there's different strokes for different folks and, and I think we're learning those sorts of things through all of this. Susan, you're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. Anyone have, um, final questions or thoughts? Thank you all.
On the COVID thing?
Yeah.
I'm thinking about the summer. I don't know what the plans are to help people get caught up. Uh, it'd be great to hear, you know, in the upcoming meeting from Tom and, and the crew, um, what we're thinking. Because I think we need, probably need to take some exceptional steps that we wouldn't do during a normal summer break. Um, because we know we've lost some learning. So how can we help kids continue to learn over the summer and not fall further behind? I think we need to be, have a much more robust kind of structure around this, that than in previous years.
Yeah. Are you talking about not necessarily for kids that are behind, but things like summer reading, summer math, that type of thing too?
Well, just for everybody. I mean, kids that were at the top of the class or, you know, they might still be at the top, but they sure didn't learn as much as they should have if, or if they would have if they were probably in school. So how do we accelerate those kids and how do we, the ones who are, you know, were behind and have fallen even further behind? behind and have fallen even further behind, you know, how do we really get them, uh, into shape too? I mean, I guess I would try and maybe think about some kind of differentiated model. And if it costs us some extra money or something to think about, you know, is there time for people to go in and get help at school, um, under, you know, social distancing guidelines, those kinds of things throughout the summer? Um, could we set expectations based on how they do on the standardized uh, testing that we were talking about doing at the end of the year? I mean, what I don't want to happen is just for us to take, everybody take the test. We find out we were 20% behind where we should be and then we just all leave for summer. Uh, I think we need to plan for that contingency now and, and have a plan in place. And if it costs us some extra money, then, you know, figure out how we're gonna get it.
Let me just follow up real clear, work quickly on that. I have, uh, met with Cynthia Chase. We've been talking about that. Dave and I together met with her and started putting some ideas together on how that would begin to look. Uh, I've also reached out to RE1. They have a Summit 54 program that does exactly what you're talking about. Uh, it already is up and running. There's a possibility we might be able to piggyback in with them. Uh, and then we've, uh, been talking with the principals about doing just what you've said and how might we identify some staff who would like to make a little extra money over the summer doing just that work? Uh, the public health order to a large degree is going to, uh, determine whether we can do some limited face-to-face or whether this is all online. So uh, that changes from week to week and we'll stay tuned on that. I'll keep you posted at our next meeting. I should have more information from Cynthia and also the Summit 54 folks about whether that's a relationship that, uh, we can piggyback on.
Yeah, but I think it's safe to assume will be a limited gatherings of 10 people, you know, at least, you know, so that would give us some space. To definitely have some face-to-face for people who are interested. And I mean, we could, we could do a, you know, as it goes kind of thing or something, but I just, I would hate to, for us, and it sounds like you're doing exactly the right thing, Tom. So just my only worry is that we would, you know, go and take those tests and then find out we're really far behind and not have the mitigation plan, at least some type of mitigation plan in place.
Yeah, we'll look for an update from Tom. That sounds great.
It, if I may, that, that conversation reminds me of a call that I received last week. It's just an anecdotal piece, but it's in line with what was just described. It's a, got a call from a father. He has a fourth grade gal and they're struggling with her ability to, to learn. And so it's, it's a data point that, it supports this. And he, he was almost in tears in the call, just how frustrated, you know, that the family unit um, has gotten themselves to and suggested, you know, again, this is dependent upon public orders and, and our ability to get back together. But he was, made a decent suggestion that we might consider, this is gonna piss off a lot of families, but consider starting school a bit earlier, uh, and try to uh, do it in unison and have an ability to do a bit of a refresher work prior to kids quote unquote, kind of matriculating on to their next grade. So maybe two weeks of refresher right in the same classroom setting, the same grade level that they're at. It feels like it could work like a K through eight. I don't know how in the hell it would work at a high school level, but it was just an idea, but it is, it's, it, it is if we needed more data to support this thinking, that's what that is. It's just an anecdotal piece of, uh, uh, an additional thought. So I wanted to chime that in. Thanks.
After all this somber talk, um, I'd like to give a little optimistic, uh, viewpoint from a doctor where I was seeing eight a day of patients with, um, COVID symptoms and now I'm seeing maybe one a day. So I just would like you all to, to know, I think the numbers are way, way down now.
That's right.
Yeah.
So tell the town council to let us out.
They haven't asked the doctors their opinion.
Okay.
It is, um, I think we better adjourn and then we'll carry on. But thank you, everybody, and thanks for all the hard work. Um, it is, what time?
3:30.
Six, and I'll adjourn the meeting. Can I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Alloved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Everybody.
Everyone.
Thank you guys.
Bye.